Good evening. Justin, could you please give the invocation this evening?
Yeah, good morning. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Everyone, please pray with me. Well, Lord of heaven and earth, we give you thanks tonight for your goodness to us, for the gifts that you pour out on us day after day. And, Lord, we, even as we come into this council chamber, Lord, we're thankful for your gift of governance, that by your hand, you created the heavens and the earth, and you set aside nations for your purposes, and which include counties and cities. So, Father, we do pray for those that you have set into governance here to lead and guide this city. And, Lord, we pray that you'd bless them, that you'd give them wisdom and strength, courage of conviction, to do the right things for this city, for this region. Lord, we thank you for these directors of the various departments, and we do pray that you'd give them strength and wisdom as well. And, Father, we pray for our first responders, thankful for the chiefs here tonight, and just pray that you'd continue to pour your blessing out on them and help them as they leave their departments. And especially for the men and women out working tonight, as other nights and days, Lord, we pray for protection and strength for them. And, Lord, we thank you for this city and pray that you would bless us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Now, we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alder Person's Clem.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Stacy. Shadle.
Here.
Sanders is absent, and Sellers.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before we begin, I'd like to just take a moment to remind everyone that the rules of council, as established by ordinance, need to be followed so that we can maintain order in our meetings and conduct business efficiently. The ordinance provides for fines for up to $250 per violation if found out of order and allows for the removal of anyone who is found out of order a second time from the meeting. I sent all of you a lengthy note prior to the last council meeting, and I read that into the record at the start of the last meeting, so I see no reason to repeat all of that here. However, I hope that we can all continue to cooperate by observing the established rules of procedure, which are designed to make sure that our time tonight is spent productively and in furtherance of the important business of our city. So, with that, start with item number one, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Parker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number two is the approval of the minutes from the special meeting on September 22nd, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Public comments? Darren, can you look and see if there's anything signed in? None? None? Then we'll move on to swearing in. Oh.
I go through time, Dinger.
Having been appointed.
Have been appointed.
As the Director of Community and Economic Development.
I am the Director of Community and Economic Development.
In the City of Freeport.
In the City of Freeport.
In the County of Stevenson.
In the County of Stevenson.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my appointments.
Of my appointments.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, next, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature unless someone has something they'd like to remove for further discussion. The consent agenda consists of approval to receive and place on file the board and commission minutes from the Freeport Public Library, August 13th, 2025, and the Foreign Fire Insurance Board, August 14th, 2025. The reports from building permit, Police Department and Fire Department, all September 25. The finance bills payable in a total of $3,304,040.95, and payroll ending October 4th, 2025, in the total of $676,719.59. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Johnson.
Aye.
Simmons. Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
The motion passes, seven to zero.
Item number six, our appointments, could you please read for the record?
We have three reappointments to the Planning Commission, all effective through October 31st, 2029. William Green, George Walker, and Will Clark. Reappointment of Yvette Sellers to the Arts and Culture Commission, effective through August 31st, 2028. Appointment of Gwen Shirley to the Freeport Housing Authority, effective through October 31st, 2030. And the appointment of Jabria Pearson to fill a vacant seat for the Arts and Culture Commission, effective through August 31st, 2027.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion on the appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Johnson.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
The motion is approved, seven to zero.
And item number seven is the first reading of ordinance 2025-59. Could you please read this?
Ordinance authorizing the sale, recycling, donation, and/or disposal of certain personal property owned by the city. Tonight, we have office furniture, Pretzel City kitchens equipment, and two Pretzel City area transit buses.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. City Hall, Pretzel City area transit and the Pretzel City kitchen are currently in need of disposing or selling a property which has no useful life. In the case of the Pretzel City kitchen, the program has been discontinued, and staff would like to put the equipment up for auction. As far as the Pretzel City transit, we have a number of buses that were involved in various incidents that damaged them, and we want to make sure that those, we can essentially get rid of those. They've been at the city yards for quite some time, I mean, years, I think. In addition to that, office furniture, we've accumulated a number of different chairs and desks, and most of which have been reviewed by staff, and if staff wanted to switch out a chair, they've done so. But now, we have the ones that nobody wants downstairs, so we'd like permission to get rid of that, get rid of the chairs and the other furniture that's in disuse.
Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward?
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion on this ordinance. Alderman, Stacy?
The auction of the kitchen equipment. How will the public be made aware of this?
So, we've been using Wisconsin Surplus, which is an online website that does auctions, and we can post a link on the city website to the auction where they can bid on that.
Would this be any reason to move this forward quicker? I mean, it's just sale items.
Absolutely. If council is so willing, please feel free to suspend the rules, because that would allow us to move along a little faster. We don't have to wait till November to do this.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules.
I second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Johnson, to suspend the rules. Suspension of the rules is non-debatable. It must pass by two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, would you please take the call on the suspension only?
Johnson.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle. Sellers.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
The suspension passes, seven to zero.
Then before you then would be the final passage. Any discussion concerning this before we take a vote? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
And the ordinance passes, seven to zero.
Thank you. Item number eight is the adoption of Resolution 2025-125. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving license agreement with Surf Air Wireless doing business as Surf Internet.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Don't be confused. Surf Wireless is the company that's installing fiber optics citywide to everyone's house. If you all remember about five years ago, when we reconstructed Empire, we installed a seven-channel microduct system underneath the sidewalk. We've been renting out, I think we've rented out one to Unite Private Network when they did a build-out, and Surf has requested a permanent review for the section, and we identified that we want them to rent our microduct more than we want them to install it in their own. So, staff has brought forward to you for discussion here tonight. The rental of one of the microducts, I think that would mean we still have five open ones, yeah. So, for 10 years, and it would be $3,000 per year, so the total duration of the contract would be $30,000. So, staff request moving forward with this agreement.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion on the resolution. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, seven to zero.
Item number nine is the adoption of Resolution 2025-126. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving license agreement for attachment of surveillance cameras on city-owned light poles with TSR or Revamp companies.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Revamp or TSR is in the old State Bank Building on the corner of State and Stevenson. Revamp owns the building, and they've been having some security concerns and requested that they would like to put some cameras, two cameras, on existing city poles. So, we put together just a real quick agreement with them for $100 a year so they could attach their cameras to these two poles for five years. So, staff recommends moving forward with the agreement with Revamp for $100 annually.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Motion, or discussion on the resolution. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
No.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, six to one.
Item number 10 is the adoption of Resolution 2025-127. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving agreement with Fairgram to provide engineering, design, and other services related to 2026 street improvements.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, as we mentioned during the Budget Committee of the Hall, we have a number of streets up for reconstruction for next year. We did enumerate them already, but I'll just quickly hit them real quick. We have work on Seminole, Carroll, South Demeter, Benton, Stewart, Dewey, Concord, Glade Wood, Pershing, and the municipal lot. For us to continue our progress, we need an agreement with, for engineering and various other services related to the reconstruction of the streets. And we've received a proposal from Fairgram for the amount of $385,500 for the 2026. This includes design, oversight, inspection, and bidding. So, it's been very, it's been working very well here the last few years, and staff recommends moving forward with this resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion on the resolution. Darren?
I just wanted to point out earlier, the people that had asked me for the list of streets this year, it's right in the proposal here, all the streets and the linear feet, and from what street to what street is in this exact proposal for this year's program.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, seven to zero.
Item number 11, could you please read the bid?
Approval of bid. There was a bid opening on October 16th for rehabilitation of a single-family home at 628 East Wyandotte Street.
Thank you. Director Heimerdinger?
Thank you. Good evening. Agenda items 11 and 12 have been combined into one memo regarding the Community Development Block Grant Housing Rehabilitation Program. This is a program that allows improvements to be made to enhance the safety and quality of life for these residents. The program includes nine homes total. Tonight covers homes eight and nine, which are the final two homes within this grant. As they said, October 16th, we held the bid opening for 628 and 724 East Wyandotte Street. For 628, we received one bid from CMM and Associates for work including new windows and trim, radon abatement, new HVAC systems, and new gutters. For 724, we received two bids. One was disqualified for missing the necessary requirements, which was a bid bond or a check, and CMM and Associates submitted the only valid bid. That project includes also new windows, radon, and lead abatement, new roof, soffit, and gutters. Staff recommends awarding both contracts to CMM and Associates in the amount of $52,865 for 628 East Wyandotte and $61,915 for the rehabilitation services at 724 East Wyandotte Street. Funding is provided through the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Grant, supporting a strategic plan, a strategic plan goal of maintaining a safe and inclusive community. I'll accept any questions on Agenda Items 11 and 12 at this time.
So, we'll start with 628 East Wyandotte. Is there a motion to approve that bid?
So moved.
Second.
The motion made by Shadle, seconded by Sellers. Discussion on 628. Alderman Stacy?
What are we gonna do with this building?
The work project?
Yeah.
I think you said it, didn't you?
Yes. We are going to, for 628, CMM and Associates is going to provide new windows, radon abatement, a new HVAC system, which includes cooling and heating, and also new gutters.
So, when all this is done, what are we gonna do with that property?
That property stays with the homeowner.
It's that Community Development Block Grant that we've received. I think that was approved quite some time ago, right?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
The motion passes, seven to zero.
So, now, we'll take item number 12, which would be on 724 East Wyandotte. Is there a motion to approve that bid?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion on 724.
I just, I just, I do want to say that both of these properties are really nice homes that will really make the neighborhood look real nice once they get done with them. They're really nice homes, and they're big homes, so.
No further discussion. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
And that motion is also approved, seven to zero.
Reports from department heads, finance?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Community development?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Public Works?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I'm very happy to announce that the City of Freeport, we submitted for a HISP grant from IDOT, and last week, we were awarded two point, almost $2.4 million. This grant was submitted for sidewalk access by South Street and West Street. That's the area that we've been talking about for a while, that people are driving scooters out into the roadways. This sidewalk program should give us connectivity from Cub Foods to Walmart and from the Culvers area to the Aldi's area with sidewalks. So, I'm very happy. That's been an area of concern for a long time. There is some match money to this grant. We'll have to pay for the design, and we had a match of $300,000 to build it, but it's exciting. We're one of the two awards in the area. Byron was awarded about $1.9 million, and we were awarded a very large project here. So, a very needed project, and I know we've had lots of complaints, and Ramp told us that this project was very needed with 30% of the mobility challenge people living and traveling this corridor, so very proud of that. Another project that I'll give City Manager Boyer and Mayor Miller credit for as well, we've been working with IDOT for the last few years, trying to bring dollars back to Freeport. Last week, I was able to strike an agreement with IDOT to repave South Street. Our participation is doing the ADA ramps in the corridor so they can pave it. So, we plan to have the ADA ramps constructed, designed and constructed by June 30th of next year, and IDOT has agreed to repave South Street from Locust to Galena, which is probably a $4.5 million project that will cost the City of Freeport nothing. So, we're extremely excited about that project. I'd also like to thank all of the council people and City Manager Boyer and Mayor Miller for agreeing to an ASME contract with our workers. The Public Works people are the backbone of the city. They deserve a fair contract. They've been doing terrific work, and we appreciate everything you're doing for those people. Another report, the ADA grievance ramps that were approved by this council for Church Street. We're gonna try to start those this week and complete them next week, so that issue should be resolved. The Public Works team's gonna try to tackle that in-house with some engineering help from my team to help get the grades right. And lastly, being this is Chief Schenberger's last week, the Public Works team would like to congratulate him on a great career, and we've appreciated all the help he's given us.
Thank you. And just to clarify, both of those projects with the sidewalks, as well as the resurfacing on South Street, will our constituents be able to see that being completed in '26, or is that gonna take a little longer?
Right now, it is planned that the South Street work would be completed in '26. The sidewalks, by June 30th, or, excuse me, not the sidewalks, the ADA ramps which are required, the repaving will be sometime, probably July to September, that that project will take place. And I did miss one other project, again, due to the relationship that we built with IDOT. We are expecting a resurfacing project and all-new ADA ramps starting next year. I don't believe it'll be completed next year, but it'll be on Galena Avenue from Park Street to Clark Street. It's a very large project for IDOT. I believe it might take two seasons to complete, but there'll be all-new pavement and all-new ADA ramps in the corridor. Right now, they're working on acquiring little slivers of property from people because the ADA ramps are an issue, and they're gonna project back on. So, they're doing some domain issues with those requirements to meet federal standards, but a lot of great work happening on top of the investments that the city's been doing it. And I can tell you, you know, honestly, this is due to all the hard work of the team that is going down there and asking for money, but also the investments that we're making as a local community. They see the efforts. We're trying to bring our street program forward and make Freeport a better place to live. So, kudos to everybody that's done that, because it's making the job easier.
But with those sidewalks, will they be done in '26? Ones from?
The HISP ones, I don't believe the HISP ones will be done next year. It's usually, because it's a federal process for that money, usually takes a year to do an ESR to be able to construct them. So, that'd probably be, honestly, a two-year project to get it to the finish line.
And then, can you give a high-level view of how, what we made on the project for IDOT in their five-year plan?
Yes. In the five-year plan, the last remaining street that made the five-year plan is West Street from Galena Avenue to South Street, or, excuse me, it's not quite to South Street, it's just beyond Empire Street. That'll be a, what they call a suicide lane repaving, so that'll be very similar to what we just did on West Stevenson Street, where we have a dedicated turn lane in the center and two single lanes based on the population of traffic in that corridor. IDOT's deemed that reasonable, but again, we've made a lot of lengths over the last few years to be down there, asking for work, asking for reconstructions. That project was slated to be out 10 to 15 years, and it got pulled into the five-year plan, and they've already issued a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 for it, so that does mean that it should hit in about five years.
So, basically, we've had some major wins in the last week.
Yes.
Fire?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to announce the backbone of the Fire Department, meaning the three shifts, are wrapping up Fire Prevention Month, educational visits to all the grade schools in town here. So, we, again, estimate about 2,500 children received fire safety education for the month of October, which they take home to their siblings, to their parents, their grandparents. So, that scope of education and training has expanded even beyond the 2,500. So, I'm real proud and grateful to my members, and once again, they delivered a nice job. Thank you.
Please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want to say that the PD will be participating in the trunk-or-treat October 26th at Our Redeemer Lutheran Church, so come out and get some candy from some of the people that work at the PD. Thank you.
Library?
I just want to say that our pumpkin book character, Pumpkin Decorating Contest, is on right now, so make sure to stop by the library and vote for your favorite pumpkin. There's a lot of really good ones.
IT? City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to congratulate Chief Schenberger. He's been the chief for two years. However, he's worked for this department loyally for 27 years. He's gonna be very difficult to live without, but we are going to wish him the best, and we thank him for his service, and we thank him very much for all the work that's come along this, especially in the last two years. He's been absolutely fantastic. Thank you, Your Honor.
I would agree, and also welcome Gertrude. We're happy to have you be a part of the team. And also, for any of you that have little ones, this Saturday in the downtown is Booty-Ful Saturday. So, if you have children, actually, of all ages, and you want to dress in a costume, your favorite costume, that starts at 10 o'clock with a free movie at the Lindo, and then the actual walk from store to store is from 11 to 1:00. So, if you'd like to participate, please do so. Alderman Johnson?
Yes. This Friday and Saturday at Eastgate Christian Center, they're having a God With Us Youth Conference. After the football game starts at 9:00, and then Saturday, they have a session at 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. It's featuring Corey Curry, Cameron Henderson, performance by The Tenacity and The Sweats, and it's for 6th grade through 12th grade.
Alderman Simmons?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Alderman Parker?
Yes, I just want to also congratulate Chris, Chief Schenberger. I hate to see him go, but I'm very happy for him, congratulating him. It's not an easy decision, so I want to say I think it's good for him to be able to move on with his life. The other thing is that Stevenson Street, that was repainted and turned into one lane each way and that. I was against it when it came up, but I drive it every day, and I see a lot of people walking in the bike path and stuff, and it's really being used, and I think they've done a great job.
Alderman Stacy?
Yes. I have a letter I would like to read. When discussing the rules of conduct and decorum, I hope these guidelines apply to
and decorum, I hope these guidelines apply to you, Mayor Miller, and everyone currently seated on this council. There have been instances where you yourself have broken these rules. For example, you have called council members liars, interrupted them rudely with snide comments while they had the floor. You injected yourself into questions not asked to you, and you even used your chair to defeat, deflect pertinent questions asked to the city manager. For example, during our council meeting held September 15th, when I asked three questions of City Manager Boyer, you refused to allow him to, the opportunity to answer. Instead, you passed the floor to Darren Stiegel. Darren, it's not, nothing against you, Darren. Darren is not a voting member of this council. He is a contracted vendor who should not even be seated at the council, but in the audience. You have verbally engaged with citizens who were allotted three minutes to uninterrupted speaking time during public comments, simply because you disagreed with their statement. Furthermore, you have permitted certain members, certain council members, to tell citizens to shut up and get out, and you've even allowed them to use the phrase "you people." Let's consider the most recent instance of disrespect for the rules of conduct and decorum, which occurred on October 6, 2025. You chose to read a letter to the council before any other business was conducted. Generally, council members and the public must wait until the end of the meeting to address the council on non-agenda items. I didn't see a mayor address on the agenda, nor the topic as an agenda item for the meeting. Did anyone else? Out of order, Mayor Miller. Instead, the council received an email on October 3rd at 2:09 p.m. that contained your letter. Nowhere in the email did you mention that you planned to read your letter during the council meeting. Again, out of order, Mayor Miller. And you have the audacity to use the term "grandstanding." So let's talk about grandstanding. Your reading of the letter was not intended to put the council on notice, as you claimed. Instead, it was an opportunity for you to grandstand, a chance for you to cater to your voter base while attempting to assert imaginary authority. I agree that the rules in conduct and decorum must be heard too by all, including you. City Manager Boyer, and since he's seated here, Darren Stiegel. My question is, what happens to you, Mayor Miller, when you break the rules? You have frequently disregarded them. What are the consequences for your action? Who holds you and your allies on the council accountable? You were clear in explaining the punishment for the council members who violate the rules. However, I don't believe you were completely forthcoming in your explanation when you cited Freeport Confide Ordinance Number 220.1024 and 25 in your letter. You stated if you are declared to be out of order, you will be subject to a fine up to $250. However, according to the City American Legal Publishing page that house all city ordinance, particular 220.1025, the actual ordinance states as follows: "Any member who refuses to, who refuses or neglects to comply with any of the foregoing rules, or who fails to conduct him or herself in an orderly and respectful manner at a council meeting, shall for each offense forfeit to the city a sum not exceeding $100 upon being duly convicted by the council." Not only did you misrepresent the potential fines, which you stated would be $250, but the actual ordinance stipulates a maximum fine of $100. You also seem to have conveniently overlooked who has the authority to declare a violation. According to the ordinance, it is the city council that deems who has broken the rules, not you, Mayor Miller, as you would like to imply. So while enforcing the rules of conduct and decorum is necessary, let's ensure it applies to all members of the public body, regardless of stature, elected, appointed, or hired. Additionally, let's make sure discipline is administered with equity, fairness, and truth. Thank you.
Alderman Shadle?
Yeah. Like to compliment Street Crews on Hans and Harvey. Was driving down there today. Fantastic. I saw they were doing work down on Warren 2. Haven't been down there yet. Been by, it looks like they're about done. Wanted to comment on the street list for next year, and the sheer magnitude of it. $6 million that we haven't, we haven't seen in a long time to put that much money out and get that much done. There was a lot of pushback on the 1% sales tax, but this is what we're getting. We're getting the work done. I have a Neighborhood Watch meeting Thursday, November 6th. That's at the Schwartz Chapel on Park Boulevard, 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Alderman Sellers?
I just wanna say I'm glad to hear all the great work the street department is doing, and all the streets that are getting done this year, and what we got planned for next year, and also just, Chief, we are gonna miss you. So that's all.
Alderman Clem?
I agree. Chief's gonna be a great loss. He's been a great asset to the police department and to the community for many years. Welcome to our new Community Development Director. Congratulations on all the street stuff, and especially, I've driven it probably half a dozen times in the last week or so. The project of Running Water West is going fantastic. There's no ifs, ands about that, and it looks like they were getting ready for pavement today. And also, the only question I had in this is just for information is all it is. We know it's been a while, and so on and so forth. Martinizing is probably gonna happen shortly, or in the wintertime, as soon as some of these end up, finish up.
Currently, with the federal government in the stature they're at, we're on hold until they come back.
Okay, that concludes council announcements. Item number 17 is public comment. Is there any public comment this evening?
Madam Mayor, I guess I forgot to
Oh, yes.
Sign in. I'm sorry. I should've done that. I received two by email. The first one, Dear Mayor, City Manager, and Alder Persons, I sent an email this morning asking for your review on a proposed ordinance in regards to sex offenders in our city. I included a link to this proposal and requested that any bias you might have with its author, Josh Atkinson, be pushed aside, and to please read this information with an open mind. I also ask for a reply from each of you, so I know you received my email, even if you weren't able to read the information about the proposal. I look forward to your replies and any ideas, concerns, and or opinions you have. I am open to discuss all of these with you. Sincerely, Carol Kropke. The second one, Mayor Miller, City Manager, City Council, City Directors, Council Alder Persons. Do, do better than to please the elites so that their overflowing pockets are filled even more with favoritism and tax breaks for certain wealthy individuals while the working poor are struggling to pay ever higher bills each year. Where's the justice in that? Do better with the housing situation in Freeport so that the working poor are not run out of their homes by overpriced rents from wealthy landlords and Realtor PACs who support some of your election campaigns to maintain the status quo, buy up the land to line their pockets more with expensive realty, while turning their backs on the least of these among us. Where is the justice in that? Do better at crime reduction, ending drug and human trafficking and gun violence in this city. You are failing miserably. Some may wonder if certain law enforcement and certain elites and individuals may be on the take or benefiting from this crime activity in other ways. Take care of the west side while ignoring the east side. Yes, racial bias. Where's the justice in that? Do better to protect our children and youth from the proliferation of pedophiles residing in our city and preventing their presence at events where children are present. Ideas are represented to you, but you choose to look the other way with blind eyes, stubborn pride, and no action. Where's the just protection in that? At council meetings, the Bible is often quoted and read during prayers to perform a matter of holiness if the right people lead them. Otherwise, I have noted eye rolls and disrespect from some of you when other than chosen ones lead a prayer. I'll leave you with a biblical prophetic voice, Isaiah Chapter 10, verses 1 and 2, from the New Revised Standard Version, updated edition. Woe to those who make iniquitous decrees, who write oppressive statutes, to turn aside the needy from justice, and to rob the poor of my people of their right, to make their widows their spoil, and to plunder orphans. Reverend Diane Yocum.
Any other public comments?
Hi, my name's Cheryl Altman. About three weeks ago, I came in and talked to Rob and Wayne to make a complaint. Got nowhere. So I'm gonna make a complaint tonight. I'm making a complaint against the City of Freeport, Rob Boyer, Wayne Duckman, and Elburn Sons. They were allowed, Elburn Sons were allowed to operate, knowing they weren't in complaints with the state of Illinois, and they were not making sure that their EPA regulations were taken care of. Then I also talked to Rob and Wayne, because I was unsatisfied with the work that they did. I was told Ben was gonna call me. Three weeks, and no call from Ben. And then also, I asked for paperwork for my property. I got one piece of paperwork with two different dates. One date was the 9th, then it was crossed off to the 13th. That's illegal. You can't do that. And then also, why is Pete Elbers still down there? His lease is up. You either need to evict him or something, because now he's living off us taxpayers. And I was glad, Alderman Stacy, that you said that, Madam Mayor, because so many times, you sit there and smirk, but you know what? There's a big storm coming for the City of Freeport, and you're gonna be involved, Mayor Miller. And I was glad, because so many times she has cut everybody off, made nasty remarks to people. You've even cut me off, and I really don't care, because I don't care about you. What I care about is the people of Freeport and the way you guys are treating them. Gun violence is terrible in here. How many shootings have we had here in the last week? You don't care because they're not happening on your side of the town. I mean, you sit there and smirk and think you're all high and mighty, but your world's gonna be crumbling down soon.
Any other public comments? Tommy?
I'm gonna miss Chief Sugarbooger, and he does a good job in that priest department, and all the priests are doing a good job with it, and Travis Davis is doing a good job at the priest station, and we're gonna miss him very much. He was a nice chief of Freeport.
Any other public comments? We'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Sellers, seconded by Shadle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.